Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And welcome to the October 4th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the Reverend Cindy Simpson forward for invocation. Reverend Simpson, thank you for being here this morning. I think this is your first round at this, isn't it?
It is indeed. Glad to be here.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear God of life and love, bless these commissioners as they work to serve the residents and visitors of our county toward enhancing the vitality of all and the common good. Grant them all of the wisdom and light that they need for these worthy endeavors, and may they sense the appreciation of grateful citizens for their efforts. In the name of all that is sacred and true, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There's a couple of folks I'd like for you to keep in your thoughts and prayers today. Commissioner Ross is having knee surgery today, so if you'll keep him in your thoughts and prayers. And then I just found out this morning that our Representative Heinecke had emergency appendectomy surgery last evening. So if you will keep both of those individuals in your thoughts and prayers today. County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, sir. What an absolutely gorgeous day the last week has been. I don't know about you guys, but this summer, the heat was pretty brutal, which from what I'm told, they've said it's the hottest summer on record. So I've thoroughly enjoyed the last week or so with this fall weather, and it looks like there's more to come. Just have three or four items this morning. Cape Hatteras National Seashore. Want to give a kudos to Superintendent Halick for working with certainly Alan Moran, our Transportation Representative for DOT, on the old piece of the Bonner Bridge that was left standing. Superintendent Halick worked out with NC DOT the opening of the pier for fishing. It's opened at 8:00 a.m. on October 1st. It's about 1,046 feet of the old Bonner Bridge section remaining, and it's free to the public, and it's accessible 24 hours a day. And I've seen pictures of the first day, and quite a few folks have already taken advantage of that. There's parking for approximately 70 vehicles near the pier. There's portable restrooms and trash receptacles out there as well. So hats off to NC DOT and Superintendent Halick for making this happen for our residents and our visitors to Dare County. Last week, our last meeting, I spoke of an icon in our community, Ms. Linda Midget, who passed away. I attended her funeral along with Mrs. Hester, our Public Information Officer, this past Thursday, in a beautiful ceremony in honor of Linda. And God rest her soul. A lady that gave everything to Dare County. And then I participated along with Commissioner House. He had the Easy ride. He was in a four-wheel Jeep. I was on my Harley. And I think we had about 150, 175 Harley riders, Steve.
Oh, we've got the numbers.
And then a couple of hundred Jeeps that were in the Tory Run last Saturday. Beautiful day, beautiful day. And Commissioner House will have some statistics for you a little bit later in this meeting. But a great day, great event, and thoroughly enjoyed riding in that. So that's certainly all I have this morning, and I will turn it over to the County Manager.
Chairman, item two on the agenda is the presentation of the county service pins, where we recognize our employees for their years of service to the county. First on our list this morning, we have Stanley Farrow, Emergency Medical Technician, and he'll receive his 15-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning and welcome.
Morning. I'd like to introduce, this is Captain Stanley Farrow, which we commonly know as Ryan. And this is his son Samuel here, who's joining us today, this morning. Stealing the show, of course. Ryan grew up on Hatteras Island. He's got family ties that date back several hundred years to the island. He started volunteering with Frisco Volunteer Fire Department and with Hatteras Island Rescue Squad while he was in high school. He found his love for patient care during that time, and he started focusing a lot more of his time and efforts with Hatteras Island Rescue Squad. When he graduated high school, he thought he wanted to become an attorney. But he decided that law school was not for him, and his first semester in college, he was searching for where he could get an EMT class, and Hatteras Island Rescue Squad was hosting one, and that was the year of 2006, starting in January. And then it finished up in May, and he was hired on with Dare County EMS as an EMT. He got his intermediate in 2009, became a paramedic in 2010. He was assigned to Dare Med Flight in 2012, where he followed up and got his flight paramedic certification then. He was promoted to Lieutenant in 2017, and then to Captain, which he is now, in 2019. He does have a love for teaching also. He's an American Heart Association instructor. He is a Level 2 North Carolina Paramedic Instructor, also for National Association EMT Club courses. He's an instructor for that, and he teaches not only with us, but with the College of Albemarle. So in his free time, which we take up a lot of, most of his time, but his free time, he likes to hunt and fish, but his favorite activity is being with his six-year-old son, Samuel, who's here. So Ryan, thank you very much for your 15 years of service to Dare County and for many, many more, 15 more to come, right?
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, we have Neary Sullivan to receive her 25-year pin from Jack Scarborough.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have Nearest with us. There's two kinds of people in this world. There's those who love Nearest and those who haven't met her yet. Because she knows no stranger. And 20 years ago, when our country was under the worst attack that it's ever been, she decided to make a career change, and she embarked on this journey. And for 20 years, she's been the voice for me out on the street since I just came off the street, and for countless others. But she's brought calm to thousands of people who have called 911. You don't call 911 when you're having a good day. You know, you're not celebrating, having a good time. It's the absolute worst time in your life is when you access this system and you get to talk to these folks. And she always brings calm. She handles all of our calls quickly, and she rose up the ranks, and now she's the Assistant Director and keeping me straight as well. And everybody loves her, and she's just a total asset. I hope for sure that she stays around for me as long as I got left. Thank you.
Next, Amy Hill will receive her 25-year pin from Alan Moran.
Good morning. So this is Amy Hill, and like I said, she's been with the county for 25 years. So when I was sitting back trying to think of what to say to kind of consolidate 25 years of Amy at the jail, you know, anybody that knows her knows she's going to take care of her duties no matter what. First and foremost, she's going to take care of what her duties are at the jail, which I'll touch on briefly. Amy takes care of all the admin side of the jail. That includes transportation, courts, paperwork. And the transportation side of that has kind of been at her heart for many years. She was a transportation officer for 20 years, and before she became the supervisor and the lieutenant over the admin, including transportation. But the last year and a half of, like everyone, has been trying, but even more so for Amy in the transportation sector, because when someone calls, historically, they call from Charlotte and say, hey, we've got an inmate for you to pick up, he'll be here tomorrow. That was easy. You send somebody to go pick him up. But these days, it's, you know, have they been COVID tested, quarantine, what's their status? It just put on a multitude of layers to have to handle with each and every minute detail. And she's done that diligently and with no problems at all, and that's a testament to her work ethic. But more than that was her character. The one thing that stuck out the whole time I was thinking about, how do you describe Amy, is the one word was motherly. Not only to me and all the other staff at the jail, but also... So Amy's got two children who are followed in her footsteps. They're both detention officers. One's a supervisor. You've got brother, James Hill, and LaKayla, she's a sergeant at the jail. They've watched her through the years and followed right behind her footsteps. Not only is she a wonderful mother to them, but through those 20 years of taking folks who are undoubtedly probably at their lowest point, may not be rock bottom, but close to it, when she's transporting them, a three-hour ride to Raleigh. Those conversations are life-changing. And she is... The one good thing about her, she's got that... Not only is she there for support, but as any mother can do, she can tell you when you're wrong and tell you what you need to do. And the number of folks who've come back and said that she's touched their lives is truly uncountable. But that goes even further. For the last, I must, decade, Amy's been a foster parent to children from Dare, Currituck, and Terrell County. Over a dozen kids she's fostered. Again, being there as a mother for when, and no fault their own, they're in a low spot. And I know of at least several that still call her mom today. She's there to show them comfort, love, and a supportive household, and that just speaks to her character. And we're blessed to have her. I hope she sticks around for a whole lot longer, because her shoes are just too big to fill, and we're blessed to have her. Thank you for your 25 years.
That's amazing.
There you go.
Thank you.
Craig's a distribution field supervisor at the Water Department, and he's receiving his 25-year pin. Craig began working with the Dare County Water Distribution in October of 1996. He's a field supervisor with the department and has always been very thorough about the quality and details of his work. Craig is very conscientious about his duties and task performance. He holds certifications for aid distribution, cross-connection, backflow, and meter testing along with a commercial driver's license. Due to his years of experience, Craig is very knowledgeable about the Dare distribution system and shares that experience with his teammates, whether it's during working hours or after hours with emergency water leaks. He works closely with the billing staff in getting new order service applications and completed meter change-out work orders to the appropriate staff member. Craig also enters completed 811 utility locate tickets. Craig, we thank you for your 25 years of Dare service and hope for many more. Chairman, that brings us to item number three on the agenda, and this is Employee of the Month. And if Catherine McCarron would come forward to make that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Karen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I bring who I'm presenting to up with me? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Patty. So Patty thinks she's here to present a presentation to you guys. She's terrified, so come on up. So you don't have any numbers to present? You can just throw that away? In 2017, Patty O'Sullivan was selected as the Veterans Services Officer, and she had some pretty big shoes to fill with the retirement of Rhonda Creef. Within the first week, Patty had already filled those shoes and then some. She was meeting veterans in the community to assist with their claims. Her percentage of claims awarded to veterans was through the roof. Patty shows up to work tirelessly and effortlessly for our veterans. Patty is fully accredited by the VA and is a member of the Veterans Advisory Council. Patty is also a vital member of our COVID response team, attending almost every testing event and vaccine clinic as a data entry extraordinaire. I receive positive and complimentary feedback from veterans on a regular basis, shouting out how helpful and compassionate Patty is in her work. It is not uncommon for me to receive a couple of emails a week from Patty outlining the claims she has helped with and the claims that have been successful in securing funds for benefits for veterans and their families. In addition to being a fierce advocate for our veterans, Patty is a fiercely loving wife, mother, grandmother, and dog lover. Our county and our veterans are very fortunate to have a fabulous advocate in part-time Patty. Thank you. This is for you. Oh, my God. Thank you very much. This is my speech. Thank you. Oh. Thank you very much.
Before we go to public comment, those of you that have received awards, if you please go right out through this door so we can get a picture, please. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that will come on when your time begins, a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On my sign-up sheet, the first person I have is Kelly Aiken.
Oh, I have no public comment. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Is there anyone else here this morning that would like to speak at public comment? Seeing none here, is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, that would close the public comment, and we would move on to item five. Items five, six, and seven are all planning issues, and Donna Creef will handle those issues.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. So the first item of business is a text amendment request to amend the travel trailer park and campground ordinance. You'll recall that we did extensive renovations to the travel trailer park ordinance last year, and one of those that we did not change was the buffer standards. We added a standard in there where if you had an existing commercial site, you could go in and add up to 20 campsites. And one of the site plans that we approved for those campsites at an existing commercial site was at the Avon Pier of Mr. Joe Thompson's property. So he had the conditional use permit or the special use permit approved for that, and as he's moved toward constructing those campsites, he realized that the requirement in the travel trailer park ordinance now that requires a vegetative buffer, that there was the likelihood or had a concern that where that buffer was going to go around the campsites, that it was going to impact the large wastewater system that he has there that serves the pier and the restaurant and the other uses that are on the site. And so he came to me and said, can we change this? And I said, well, I don't have the authority to do that, but we can certainly seek an amendment to the travel trailer park ordinance, and so that's what we're doing today. We have submitted some language that would allow flexibility so that you could have either a wooden or a solid fence or the vegetation, whichever works best for you. That draft language is in your packet. Before we can amend the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing on that. Mr. Thompson is here in the audience if you have any questions for him or if you have any questions for me. But the motion today is to schedule a public hearing for October 18th at 5:00, so we can entertain comments on that language.
Any questions from the board? Then what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to have a public hearing regarding this matter.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to hold a public comment on October 18th at 5:00 p.m. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Joe, we look forward to hearing from you on the 18th.
So the next item of business is a special use permit for Mr. Jeff Aiken. Mr. Aiken is here in the audience today as well. And Mr. Aiken leases and runs a fish house down in Altoona Lane down in Hatteras Village, and he is looking to construct another fish house there adjacent to that property. The property is Zoned R2AH, and fish houses and associated dockage are special uses in that district. And so the site plan for that property is in your packet. He is proposing to build a 5,625-square-foot building. Internal to the fish house, there'll be some retail space for seafood sales. The site plan that you have in your packet depicts those improvements there at the end of Altoona Lane. He will have to get a CAMA permit and some other state permits. There is a draft special use permit in your packet that was reviewed by the Planning Board at their meeting last month, and they have identified what we have deemed to be reasonable and appropriate conditions. They include a 36-month time period for the building to be constructed. And there is a residence to the south of the property that will have a wooden fence there as a buffer added. The special use permit is in your packet as well as the site plan, and Mr. Aiken is here, as well as his engineer. If you have any questions for them or any questions for myself, the motion today is to approve the site plan and the special use permit.
All right, board, is there any questions of Mr. Aiken concerning his proposal? County Manager?
Yes, sir.
I know you need to address those conditions.
I do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Aiken.
Mr. Aiken, you've been sworn, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just two or three things here. One, do you consent and agree that the documents that you've submitted in the file can be presented in evidence to the board?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, do you agree and consent to the testimony that was just given by Donna Creef, the Planning Director?
Absolutely.
And have you seen and reviewed and approved the S U P that is being proposed this morning?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Aiken? I'd just like to say, Mr. Aiken, in this day and time with what's going on, with what the members of the board's trying to do in our fishing industry is very disturbing, and this is a plus to see an expansion of a fishing center. So I have nothing but the best and success for you by expanding that. I'm hoping that it'll be extremely successful for you.
Thank you very much. We've seen this need for a processing plant, and the opportunity to do this gives me the opportunity to pass on the legacy to my sons and my daughters-in-law who are in the audience today. We come as a family package with some grandkids that'll be working in the retail market as well, and we're just very appreciative of the opportunity.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, as you and other members of the board know, I've worked very hard on commercial fishing. And what you just said about your family is the reason why we fight. We're fighting to protect the heritage in Dare County. And in so many times in the past few years, we've seen where the commercial fishing industry has suffered and has decreased. This is an excellent way to actually show the people of not only Hatteras, but also the state of North Carolina, we're still here, we're still willing to grow. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to support the S U P 322021 and associated site plan for the proposal fish house and docking to be approved.
Absolutely. It's been motioned on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion, Commissioner Couch?
Jeff and his family's other operation, they're tremendous ambassadors for the industry. You can go down there anytime when the boats are coming in or when they're cleaning fish, and they serve to represent our heritage to people from all over the United States. So thank you. Thank you for that, for your willingness to engage people as well.
Thank you, Danny. At my age, and I just turned 70, I wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't for my kids and my grandkids. But after 40 years, we've seen fish houses, nine of them. When I opened my fish house and started buying fish, there were nine fish houses in Hatteras. And my understanding is that at the end of this year, there'll just be two left.
Right.
But we've already seen some gratuitous response from fishermen that are taking up with us. We buy all the fish from Oak Ridge Island as well, and we've seen tremendous growth already, just with people knowing that we're making this commitment, and we appreciate y'all's support.
That's fantastic.
Great news.
Hope your kids have 40 years plus in it.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Thanks for all you're doing. With that being said, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And my last item of business this morning is another request to amend the zoning ordinance this time, and this is Mr. Joe Thompson again. Joe's been a busy fella. As I said in the previous amendment for the travel trailer park ordinance, that he operates the Avon Pier there, and he has a food truck there at the Avon Pier, and he had called me a couple of months ago and said, you know, I think I need more than one food truck there, but your regulations only allow, or the zoning ordinance only allows, one food truck. And I said, well, you know, you can amend that. And when we put those regulations in the zoning ordinance for the mobile food units, we were kind of hesitant to do so, and we didn't know what kind of reception we were going to get. So we only, you know, we put the limit in there for one food truck, and we've had some success with that. We've approved eight food trucks since we amended the zoning ordinance in 2014, I think it was, 2018, I'm sorry. And so we have some language in the packet that Mr. Thompson submitted to allow more than one food truck at a commercial site. It allows up to five food trucks, and there's really nothing magic about the number five. It just was what seemed appropriate. In adjusting those standards for the mobile food units, some of the other standards needed to be adjusted, the parking standard currently, you have to have five or 10 dedicated parking spaces. For every food truck that you add, you have to add two additional ones. The standards to have public restrooms are still attached to them if you have outdoor seating, and that comes from the state health regulations. And there's some other changes in there that... in there that are incidental to what Mr. Thompson is seeking approval for. The planning board did review this at their last meeting and they were unanimous in their recommendation of favorable action. Before we can amend the zoning ordinance, we have to have a public hearing on that and the request today is to schedule that public hearing for October the 18th. And as I said, Mr. Thompson is here if you have any questions for him or for myself.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Thompson with request to this public hearing?
I got a question of Donna. This is countywide, this is just not site-specific.
This is unincorporated there countywide.
Unincorporated, yes.
Yes, 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 sir. And so, the standards that we did in 2018 were countywide. Most of the trucks that we've approved have been on Hatteras Island. We've done a couple here on Roanoke Island, but you know, most of our commercial land is down on Hatteras Island and so if the ordinance is amended, it would be for the unincorporated portions of the county. The way that the language is written, you have to have 10 parking spaces and a lot of the commercial businesses don't have 10 excess parking spaces and so the likelihood that someone is going to have more than one food truck is pretty slim. It just so happens that the Avon Pier that Mr. Thompson owns has a great deal of parking associated with the improvements there and so he's able to accommodate more than one food truck if he so desires and if the market is there and if, you know, if somebody wants to park another food truck there. And so, but yes, it is for unincorporated Dare County, not the towns, just the county.
So hypothetically speaking, the guy at the Jump Masters down here could have five food trucks there as long as he had 50 parking spaces?
50 parking spaces in addition to what is required for his use there.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Commissioner Couch?
I think with the amount of land there, if we're going to continue to encourage events, we've got to be able to offer services to people who want to attend events and I think this is a precedent that's going to serve us well in an unincorporated Dare.
Thank you. And we need to schedule a public hearing October 18th.
Motion to do a public hearing.
Okay. Motion's on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, has been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
See you on the 18th, Joe.
Chairman, that brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a presentation of proclamation for Mental Illness Awareness Week and Sheila Davies and Kelly Netton are here for that presentation.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning. Great to see you all. I'm going to take this off from it. So, we are here not only to share the proclamation about Mental Health Awareness Week, but also to showcase some of the work that's being done by the Breaking Through Task Force. So, Kelly, who's our Public Information Officer and Communications Specialist with Health and Human Services, is going to provide that presentation. But just a little bit of background before she starts, mental health has been cited as a significant concern in our community dating back from the early 2000s with the Community Health Assessment. And in each assessment that we've done, it continues to be on the top level of issues cited by citizens. In fact, in our most recent assessment, 19.2% of community survey respondents indicated that they had, that poor mental health had affected their day-to-day or normal activities within the last 30 days, meaning they were unable to perform normal daily activities. One of the things that really came out of the Community Health Assessment through focus groups was the stigma that's associated with early intervention or seeking care or help. And that's one of the primary functions of the Breaking Through Task Force is to try to help break down that stigma and recognize that it's okay to get help. It's okay to say, I'm struggling a little bit or I'm just not able to cope the way that maybe I normally have been able to cope. So, Kelly's going to talk on just the phenomenal work that the group of stakeholders that's been working really hard behind the scenes to raise awareness and help us break the stigma. Chairman Woodard and Commissioner Overman have sat in several meetings recently where we brought additional stakeholders to the table to address the increased concerns that the pandemic has exacerbated the issue with mental health illness especially or mental health challenges, especially with our adolescent and youth population. And so, most recently, we've been able to bridge the great work that the community or that the Breaking Through Task Force has done with some of the key stakeholders around the table. And I think what you'll see today is an effort to use the collective voice that we have and the powerful voice that we have by bringing key community stakeholders together to share what I think is one of the best-kept, shouldn't be, but it is, the best-kept secrets right now about this work that the Breaking Through Task Force is doing and the website that they put together as a resource for folks in Dare County, whether it's parents, whether it's community leaders, whether it's school personnel. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Kelly, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you for having us. Okay, so I'm just going to run through a brief presentation telling you a little bit about the task force and some of the work that we have done. So, basically, our whole purpose for being here is because we believe we can do better when it comes to mental health in Dare County. And we were formed in 2016 and we are part of Help the Carolinians of the Outer Banks. So, our approach is we want to provide a community-involved approach to address mental health while being mindful of three levels of prevention and our strategies are designed to address general public high-risk situations and those who are living with mental health concerns. We've been really fortunate the past three years to receive funding from the Vident/Other Banks Hospital Community Benefits Program for our public awareness campaign that I'm going to tell you a little bit about. So, our values can be broken into two areas, education and connection, and we believe by that we'll be able to work towards breaking mental health stigma. So, our education is geared toward general public caregivers and community stakeholders. We also want to connect people, so connect them to services, connect them to others who are living with some, under similar circumstances and also connect them to skills that can, you know, support good mental health. So, our strategy is how we're achieving this. The education, we have a video series that we are slowly working on putting together. Our most recent video was on anxiety and we actually saw within the first 24 hours a three-times increase from our previous videos so that the word is getting out there. We also have a website that promotes information and education on mental health basics. We have members of the task force who are trained in mental health first aid for youth and adults, our public awareness efforts and outreach events. And through connection, we actually are working right now, one of our projects I'm really excited about is a mental health workbook for adults that will teach some really great basic skills that, you know, we all could learn from. Connection through social media. We also on our website have a blog where we invite people to submit articles sharing their experiences. We also have professionals that can talk a little bit about what treatment could look like or maybe some common themes they're seeing in their practice right now. Our website also has resources listed. We have a pretty extensive section for that and we also have, recently, we created a COVID resources guide. And then, we also have a members forum that we're working on enhancing a little bit more right now that will connect individuals to other individuals. So, our progress, we have a YouTube page, we launched our website, we also, as I mentioned, have the blog postings. This past year, we have hosted a few listening sessions where individuals can participate virtually. Our members section and our mental health videos series, I believe we have five or six videos in that series now. We also have a children's mental health workbook as well and then our outreach events. So, on the horizon, as I mentioned, our adult mental health workbook is one of our next projects. We're going to be working on a depression video. Last month, we promoted some suicide prevention awareness information through our social media and website. Mental Illness Awareness Week, being here with you all is a huge part of what we're trying to help get the word out. And then, we're going to be working on the increased participation in our members forum on our website. So, for Mental Illness Awareness Week, like I mentioned, a big part's coming here and speaking to you all. We also created a community partner toolkit through collaboration with Dare County Public Relations. And so, that information, that toolkit's going to be shared with the towns, Realtors' Association, Dare County School and the hospital. And in that information, we're going to have graphics and things that help people understand where to go for what issue, what concern they might be having, what is a crisis, where do you go for help for that. We also worked on enhancing our resources section on our website. So, again, explaining the where to go for what, crisis resources page as well, explaining on our main page, you'll be able to see where you can go for crisis. Counselors with their specialties. So, that was one of the issues of concern that was brought up is some individuals do not treat children of certain ages. So, we have that information now listed on our website that can help people navigate to the appropriate care that they need. Groups, information on groups and virtual resources. Another item that I didn't mention in our community partner toolkit is we produced, I believe, five PSAs, radio PSAs that are going to be aired. They've already been shared with the radio station. So, those are out there as well and available to our community partners. So, how we could use your help is to get involved with us. You can join our task force. Our meetings right now are virtual, so it's fairly easy to participate. On our website, there's also a section where you can sign up to become a mental health champion. We, you know, mental health champions, there's a little video explaining that, but you know, it's someone who's mindful of the words they use when they are talking about mental health because, you know, what we say really can either help or hurt stigma with mental health. You can join our members section on our website, follow us on social media. If you have a business website, you know, you're welcome to connect to us from your website and participate in Mental Illness Awareness Week. We're going to have various social media posts coming through our Facebook, so you're welcome to follow us, like those posts, share those posts, anything we can do to get the word out. And then, here is our contact information. So, if, you know, any of you would like to connect with us, here is how you can get in touch with us. And I'm going to just very briefly show you a little bit of our webpage right here. So, this is our main landing page. So, here our partners can download our toolkit from here. This is our crisis resource section, so it's right there on the first page. And then, I'm just going to show you very briefly our resources section. So, we have a landing page that kind of breaks down the different areas. So, we have our counselors, as you can see, listed, what their location is, phone number, if they have a website, and then what their specialties are if they treat children. So, that's just a very high-level overview. So, if you have, you know, any questions, I'd love to answer them. And I also have a gift bag that I'm going to give Cheryl that has rack cards, ink pens, stickers, and a few of the mental health workbooks for children in there. So, you know, I would encourage you all, take them home to your families, to your businesses, or disperse them amongst departments, but there's more if you'd like that as well.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well done.
Yes, well done.
I got a question. So, we kind of touched this, we had the gap in the mobile crisis at our Saving Lives Task Force meeting, I think. Sheila, you might have been on the line for that. Someone who is suffering from alcohol, depression, drugs, everything, they call these numbers here. They're given immediate direction and help to get to a facility. Tell me, walk me through what happens here.
Certainly. So, if you're in crisis and you call one of the numbers or you can reach out, you can, now, there's several options. You can call, you can do a chat online. The first thing they're going to do is just a quick assessment. If it's, if they determine that it's an emergent need, they may call 911 if it's something they don't think they can address. If they think they can address it, mobile crisis can actually create a plan to come meet on-site with the individual and do a more thorough evaluation than an assist with getting them. If it is indeed needing placement, they can work with that or it's, you know, often they can try to work on de-escalation of the issue to then get them to an appropriate local level of treatment, not necessarily requiring traveling outside of the area. That's going to be their first goal, de-escalate and then stabilize and then get therapeutic intervention afterwards.
Good. I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Of course.
What I'd like to do, if it's okay, Chairman, is read the proclamation for your consideration?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, proclamation proclaiming October 3rd through October 9th is Mental Illness Awareness Week. Whereas, mental health is an essential aspect of an individual's overall health because it can also have an effect on one's physical, emotional, and social well-being. And whereas, one in five adults in the United States, which is approximately 43.8 million people, experience a mental health problem in any given year and nearly one in 20 American adults live with a serious mental illness. And whereas, challenges concerning mental health have become even more pronounced during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, which has had a negative impact on the mental health of millions of people around the world. And whereas, the stigma surrounding suffering from mental health challenges as well as seeking treatment for the struggles one faces regarding mental health have often created barriers to treatment. And whereas, approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three-quarters of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 24. And whereas, suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death in Dare County and the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States. And suicide is also the second-leading cause of death among young adults in the United States. And whereas, 90% of people who die by suicide have shown symptoms of a mental health condition according to the interviews with family members, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas, many individuals who develop substance use disorders and are also diagnosed with mental disorders and vice versa, and about half of those who experience a mental illness during their lives will also experience a substance use disorder or vice versa. Whereas, extensive delays which sometimes last for years or even decades often occur between the time that symptoms of mental illness first appear and the time when individuals seek help. And whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in the successful management of mental illness and lead to recovery. And whereas, it is important for individuals of all ages to maintain their mental health and to learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas, every citizen and community can make a difference in helping and end the silence and stigma that far too long has surrounded mental illness and also discouraged people from getting help. And whereas, public education and community activities can boost mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families who are affected by mental illness. And whereas, the Breaking Through Task Force was formed in 2016 and is working to provide a community-involved approach to address mental health in our local community and improve the lives of individuals who are struggling with mental illness as well as their family members and friends. This involves addressing the associated stigmas and breaking through the barriers that may block someone from seeking assistance and providing help through available resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, as the Board of Commissioners of Dare County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd, 2021, through October 9th, 2021 as Mental Illness Awareness Week.
Move to approve.
Sir, there's a motion on the floor, was it Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman and second, Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Sheila, Kelly, very good work on your part. It's pretty astounding, the numbers saying that it's the eighth in, just in Dare County alone. Pretty staggering.
Yeah.
So, thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, items nine and 10 will be presented by Dave Clawson.
Good morning, Dave.
Thank you. Good morning. The first item is to take you back to our irrevocable trust agreements again. Back in 2020, we asked you to approve what we called a master trust agreement, which was one trust agreement which would do, have one account for the retiree health portion, which is called other post-employment benefits, and one account that'll do law enforcement officer special separation allowance. I'd actually had a class and talked to somebody from the IRS that recommended this and Parker Poe recommended it as well and they drew up the agreements and you approved them. Then, back in February this year, you guys approved funding the law enforcement officer side. So, I started the process with the State Treasurer's Office, which they call the AGPIP, which is Ancillary Government Participant Investment Program, to have that trust approved and fund the law enforcement side with them. In June, they came back to me and our attorney and said that they can't use the master trust agreement because of administrative. agreement because of administrative constraints imposed by the service provider. And what that means, it's not the State Treasurer's fault, it's BlackRock, which is the service provider, and everybody that participates this gets to invest in a closed-end mutual fund that BlackRock runs, an equity index fund. And when you have returns, their five-year average, annual average is 14.9%, their three-year annual average is 14.8%, and then fiscal '21 was 39.5% return. So when you have those returns, my guess is you can dictate what the structure is and that not a lot of people argue with it. So what I had our attorney at Parker Poe do was go back and redraft separate trust agreements, which they didn't charge us for. So what you have in front of you now is to go back and restate those trust agreements, have one for the retiree health and one for the law enforcement officers. Then I'll get started back with State Treasurer's Office and get those law enforcement officer funds invested. So our request is to adopt the restated Law Enforcement Officer Special Separation Allowance Trust Agreement and adopt the restated OPEB Trust Agreement.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Overman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
My other item is just a normal, what you see debt reimbursement resolution, which will allow us to reimburse ourselves for certain expenditures after we issue a piece of debt. And this one is kind of a just-in-case-we-need item for the Buxton and Avon Beach Nurishment Project, which, by the way, they, we met with CSC, Friday of week before last. They're going to release the advertisement for those bids on October 18th, and the bid opening is November 22nd. In relation to that, Bond Counsel thinks they have worked out the collateral for the debt for Buxton and Avon Beach Nurishment, and will use the Justice Center, just like we're using for our debt for the town's beach nourishment. But just in case we have an issue with collateral levels, it's all going to come down to what the bank says is okay. And a Justice Center courthouse is pretty, as essential as you get, so those collateral levels will be low, and we think we'll be just doing that. But just in case, we had a capital improvement plan project at the Pheasant Center for $285,000, which is a cash pay-go project. This is a reimbursement resolution for that, just in case we need that as additional collateral. So right now, the plan is not to finance it, but this puts in place what we need if we need that collateral, then we can do that later.
All right. County Manager, how about reading that resolution, if you will? It's not too long. Just for the record, if you don't mind.
This is a resolution of the County of Dare, declaring the intent of the County of Dare, North Carolina, to reimburse itself for capital expenditures from the proceeds of certain tax-exempt obligations. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the County of Dare, North Carolina, has determined that it is in the best interest of the county to proceed with the following projects. One, at the Pheasant Center, replacement of all decking, handicap ramps, stairs, handrails, and pickets upgrading to composite materials for both ADA and storm mitigation improvements. And two, a beach nourishment maintenance project in the Village of Buxton to maintain the project originally constructed in 2017. And three, a new beach nourishment project in the Village of Avon. Collectively, the projects. Whereas the county presently intends, at one time, at one time or from time to time, to finance all or a portion of the cost of the projects with proceeds of tax-exempt obligations, and reasonably expects to cause to be executed and delivered tax-exempt obligations, the obligations to finance or to reimburse itself for all or a portion of the cost of the projects. Whereas the county desires to proceed with some or all of the projects and will incur and pay certain expenditures in connection with the projects prior to the date of execution and delivery of the obligations. Such original expenditures to be paid for originally from a source other than the proceeds of the obligations, and the county intends and reasonably expects to be reimbursed for such original expenditures from a portion of the proceeds of the obligations to be executed and delivered at the date occurring after the date of such original expenditures. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Dare, North Carolina, as follows. The county presently intends and reasonably expects to reimburse itself for the original expenditures incurred and paid by the county on or after the date occurring 60 days prior to the date of adoption of this resolution from a portion of proceeds of the obligations. The county reasonably expects to execute and deliver the obligations to finance all or a portion of the cost of the projects, and the maximum principal amount of obligations expected to be executed and delivered by the county to pay for all or a portion of the cost of the projects is approximately $32 million, a current estimate of which is further broken out for the projects on the DA to this resolution. The county adopts this resolution as a declaration of official intent under Section 1.150-2 of the Treasury Regulations promulgated under Section 103 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, to evidence the county's intent to reimburse itself for the original expenditures from proceeds of the obligations. The Finance Director of the County, with advice from Bond Counsel, is hereby authorized, directed, and designated to act on behalf of county in determining and itemizing all of the original expenditures incurred and paid by the county in connection with projects during the period commencing on the date occurring 60 days prior to the date of adoption of this resolution and ending on the date of execution and delivery of the obligations. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon the date of its adoption.
Thank you, County Manager.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, that brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes of September 20th, a correction to the capital project ordinances for S2021A installment financing for Manio and Kill Devil Hills projects, a water department budget amendment, scheduled meeting dates for 2022, Health and Human Services Public Health Division requests for a full-time administrative specialist position for environmental help and eliminate two part-time positions, and a 5311 Designee Certification for Fiscal Year 2023 and '27. When you go up to the number three, the Water Department Amendments, you received a document, I think by email, and there's one also in your packet. It's a form over substance when we did the, when the Water Department submitted the first budget amendment to move those funds around, they used the wrong account numbers, and when Dave and his group audited, they changed it. And so what you have is a change, taking the money from the correct departments and put them in the right budget line. So again, it was a form over substance change, but the dollars remain the same.
Okay. Move to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to adopt the consent agenda as presented. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, are your October board appointments. First is the Land Transfer Tax Appeal Board. June, a representative of the town of Manio has moved out of the area. The town of Manio recommends appointing James Ayers.
Move to appoint James Ayers.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to appoint James Ayers, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Run-Island Community Board. The terms of Janique Lee, Betty Selby, and Clarence Lewis have expired. All would like to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Overman to reappoint, seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Health and Human Services Board. The term for Latonya Murray has expired, and the Health and Human Services Board recommends her reappointment.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Over to reappoint, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Dare Library Board. The terms of Janice Willis and Mike Hogan have expired. Willard Hathcock of Manio has resigned. Applications have been received from Karen Blows, Catherine Fagan, Michelle Estes Lewis, Mary Lou Hoferd, Maggie May, Ruth Perkins, Erin Walton, and Joanne Wilson Harfst. The Library Board recommends the appointment of Janice Willis and Mike Hogan to another term. They also recommend Mary Lou Hoferd of Southern Shores, Ruth Perkins of Kitty Hawk, and Joanne Wilson Harfst of Kill Devil Hills be appointed.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Further discussion?
They've served us well, that Library Board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Pheasant Center Advisory Board. The Pheasant Center Advisory Board currently has two vacancies. The Board recommends Edward J. O'Brien Jr. fill the Avon vacancy, and Megan Byatt fill the at-large vacancy.
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve, it's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Molly McGinnis is no longer with the school board and has resigned her position on this council. The council recommends Mac McGow be appointed to school superintendent designee. Paul Pollack and Laura Gilreith are recommended to be appointed to the two at-large positions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner House, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then finally, your upcoming appointments. In November, you have the Older Adult Service Advisory Council with three terms expiring, the Radante Wave Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring, the Stumpy Point Community Center Board with one term expiring. In December, you have the Equalization Review Board, which has five terms expiring, and the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring. And then in January, you have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Council, the Dare County Joint Community Advisory Council with one term expiring, and then the Tourism Board has seven terms that expire. That'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager.
Commissioner Tobin, is the advisory council still not able to get into the nursing home?
Yes, that's actually on something I'm going to talk about.
Oh, good, good. I'm anxious to hear what you have to say there. Thank you.
Chairman, with regard to the Tourism Board terms that are expiring, by the time we generally do that, it's sometimes difficult for that incoming board to meet up. Is it possible to move that to December?
I have no problem whatsoever with that. If it's the pleasure of the board, yeah, we can do that.
The only big problem is the elections with some of the towns as far as applications. So I'm waiting. I've corresponded with each of the towns and the groups.
The November elections will change the boards, could change the board seats, and...
Well, that's November the 3rd or 4th.
Yes, like the early... But they won't have had an opportunity to meet, to recommend their people potentially by the November, if you're trying to do it in November. If we can sketch, if we can work out the logistics of doing that...
So by the second meeting in December, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have that information?
Well, it depends on when the towns meet.
Or we don't have a second meeting.
We don't have a second meeting. So, Cheryl will continue to work on it. If we can logistically get the election completed, they can get their nominees to us, then we'll try to do it in December. If not, we'll do it in January.
Ten-four.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. That brings us to item 13, and Commissioner's business and manager's attorney's business. Commissioner Tobin, you mind kicking that off? Yeah, I'd love to. This past week, Commissioner House and myself went down to New Orleans for the conference that was going on for beach nourishment down there, and also to go to Morgan City and check up on the dredge project. We do have some pictures, I think, of the dredge that I sent over. This is, this is the hopper section of the dredge, and if you'll notice, the hopper section and we're standing on the bow sections, they've been attached. So basically, the entire ship, the length of the ship is together now. If you can go to the next picture. That's just another picture from the bow. Go ahead and go to the next one. This is the stern, and if you notice, all the little kind of plates on the part of the stern that are going up, that's where all the aftercoolers go. They've got just about all the rub rails reattached, and the rub rails, if you'll notice, they have holes in them, they put a product in there to stop any corrosion that could infiltrate there. Go ahead, next one. That's a much better picture of where those coolers get attached. They had attached them all, just welding straight to the plate on the bottom deck, but they decided that'd be better if they put a doubler up on them, so they'd all been removed, and those doublers are placed on them right there. Go ahead, next one. This is an interesting picture right here. This is the bow of the boat, but this young man right there in the front is Scully. Scully's the superintendent of the entire yard, and I don't know if any of you know that some of the sport fishing boats around here were Scully's also, and that's his brother. So there's a connection here to Dare County, and Scully actually comes up and goes to the shipyard over in Mans Harbor quite a bit.
Those photos really give you a perspective of how big that vessel is.
It's big. Okay, next one. That's the bow. The whole thing's attached, and they're, they're working on, there's a seal that goes down in the middle of the hopper, and they're, that's what they're working on right now. Go ahead, next. This is the base for the house that goes on the ship. If you notice this arm that comes off the side, that's one of the hinges that the whole thing, that the hulls will hinge on and open up beneath it. Okay, another one. That's the aluminum plate that will go on top of that. That's the picture that I just showed you before. And everything up from this point will all be made out of aluminum. Okay? That's me. Okay, that's basically my report on the dredge. The other thing... Is that, Jim, is that, we still on, on... We're still on the April, April schedule for launch, yes.
Did they get hammered pretty hard by Ida?
They got hard, Morgan City didn't get hammered hardly at all. There was very, very, very little damage. But Homa, which is only about 20 miles or so away from Morgan City, the I went through Homa, and a lot of the workers live in Homa. So they are, they do have some worker shortage at the yard right now, just because the people are displaced. And yes, there's, we saw a lot of hurricane damage.
Wow.
Yeah, turns out. The next thing, when I was down there, the Community Advisory Council for Peak Resources and Spring Arbor had a meeting, so I attended the meeting virtually from New Orleans. And what's happened there, Bob, is the federal government came down and said the state was not supplying enough education to the volunteers. And they also weren't giving the volunteers enough scope of what they could do when they went onsite. So October 1st was the deadline to institute a new program. They've drastically increased the amount of training hours that we all have to have. It's going to be difficult to find volunteers for it now, in my opinion, because of how many training hours you're going to have to go through, and they're still not letting us back onsite, which is, even compounds that problem. You've got to go through 40 hours of training, and then you can't go do your job. So it's, everybody was frustrated with it, but we're going to persevere and see what happens. It's truly frustrating.
Yeah, it is. I think you're aware, my mother's at Peak and not able to get in to see her. I've got to make an appointment, and they have to bring her out, outside, so it's very difficult.
Yeah. And this is the time that there's ripe for abuse in there, because nobody can go in and see what's going on.
Right, right.
Now, with that said, they are drastically expanding what we can do. We'll be able to operate as, basically... We'll be able to operate as, basically, the same way the Almsbudsman can operate. We can open investigations now if we want to. But then it gets in, one of the side discussions we had was, okay, say I went in there and found something and opened up an inspection. Well, that opens me up to liability. It opens the county up to liability. And it, it's, there's a big, big, big gray area in there right now. So they're working on it. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, interesting. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner House?
Yeah, like Commissioner Tobin said, we went down for the beach nourishment conference. And also, some other presentations that were done. One of them I found extremely interesting was something we've talked about here. Ken Wilson has, has brought it up as well and several times about doing a thin-layer placement over wetlands. One of the presenters down there did the largest wetland replenishment project in the United States. And I forgot exactly how many thousands of acres has been accomplished in doing that by increasing the wetlands, which also increases our ecosystems as well. And also with, with storm mitigation from marsh grass really knocks down the waves coming in with storm surge and stuff like that. So it was a very interesting project that he had done and got some good pointers for that. And I, I tell you, that part of it was just immensely knowledgeable. So we did get some, some stuff out of it. Yeah, the dredge project is going along great. They're right on schedule. And like I said, some of their people were displaced because of the hurricane, but they're still, still plugging along and getting it done. So that was a, a very good trip to watch and to really get touch base with them again and rejuvenate those relationships. So it was, it was a great, great visit. As Chairman mentioned earlier, we had the toy run. And a big part of the toy run was the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion. We had four hundred and seventy-five Jeeps registered for the Jeep Invasion.
Wow.
And that's four hundred and seventy-five Jeeps. You figure about, like, what is it, regular families, two-point-five kids and plus mom and dad. So four hundred and seventy-five Jeeps with their families. And that brought in additional income to the community as far as restaurants, lodging, and that, and those type natures. The toy run itself, well, let me get back, get back to the Outer Banks Jeep Invasion. Preliminary numbers, we should have grossed about, it's been publicly put out, has grossed at about nineteen thousand dollars.
That's great.
That's pretty good for a, a three-day, a four-day event. And for the toy run itself, we had an ongoing friendly competition between the motorcycles and the Jeeps. And the motorcycles have always beaten us out in numbers of participants. And this year, we knew we were going to have them. Mr. Chairman, you had a hundred and twenty-five motorcycles. We had a hundred and ninety-five Jeeps.
I know. I know, it was a ton of...
We also had, at the Jeep Invasion, also had a lot of the other nonprofits in the area. Nest was out there at a point, one point in time. Both the Currituck Food Pantry, the Dare County Food Pantry was out there. And the SPCA was out there. And the SPCA actually had two dogs adopted onsite. So it was a great, great turnout for them as well. With our day in history, and one of them kind of goes back to our roots here in Dare County, nineteen oh-five, Orville Wright pilots the first flight longer than thirty minutes. The flight lasted thirty-three minutes seventeen seconds and covered twenty-one miles. Now, keep that in perspective, and then fifteen years later, we were doing transcontinental flights. In nineteen sixty-three, Hurricane Flora stormed through the Caribbean, killing seven thousand people in Cuba and Haiti. It hit Cuba as a category four. And the I actually circled around Cuba, maintaining, still maintaining that, that category four strength. Lasted for four days. One hundred inches of rain fell in Cuba. In nineteen sixty-five, Pope Paul VI arrived in New York. He was the first pope to ever visit the United States. And also, this week is not only mental illness awareness week, it's also fire prevention week. And being a firefighter for, for many years, I can see where the two can coexist. Firefighters have always been known to be brave and courageous, but also a little mental to go into a burning building. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I'm not sure about the Jeeps, but as you know, we go down the beach road from Walmart. We get on the beach road, go down the railroad, then turn off and get on the causeway and go over the bridge. I don't know what the hurry was. On twelve, I didn't go below fifty miles an hour. And of course, we had, we had police officers at every intersection. But I was thinking to myself, what in the devil was the rush to run down there? And that was pretty pa- fast going down the beach road. I never got below fifty miles an hour.
Well, I can tell you, I was at the very end of the line, and I was pushing it to hit thirty.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, you've got some slow Jeeps. But I know the motorcycles were flying.
Oh, yeah.
And I had to tease Turing when we get over to, over to the line. I said, man, what the devil was the rush? But, and of course, we were clicking seventy-five plus going across the bridge.
Going over the bridge, yeah.
So thank heavens for the offices in all, all the towns because they were monitoring every intersection. And, and they did, did a great job, you know, holding the traffic back at all the major intersections and stuff. But I would, I would have much rather had a little bit calmer ride over there. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank, once again, our service pin recipients, representing eighty-five years of service to Dare County, and our Employee of the Month, Patty O'Sullivan, who does such outstanding work for our veterans. The work she's doing is, is really fantastic. Like for everyone to keep me in your hearts and prayers as I will be on the UNC campus tomorrow. I will shoot them the hand sign before I leave.
Just, just so you don't misunderstand.
That's right. I'm glad you clarified.
That's all right.
Bobby's got a hand sign for you.
Maybe he does right now.
Commissioner Bateman?
There's a comedian in every bunch. Okay. We have great business when we have events like the cycle toy run and stuff. And we have, it just increased our business. We had Jeeps, we had motorcycles. So we appreciate not only what it did for the community, but it also brings business down there, which is a great thing. So it's the trickle-down effect. Distinguished Vice Chairman spoke at the Sabanized Task...
Walk Against Addiction.
Walk for Addiction. And great turnout. Brenda Thatcher did a great job organizing. We had some good people down there. Dare Challenge was there. Mental Health was there. We had a lot of participants. And we always need to bring a focus and attention to those who are suffering from a dreaded disease such as that, as well as mental health, which is this Mental Health Week. So we need to recognize those folks. Riding down the road, Sarah Dean Manio coming over to, had to go over to Ace Hardware. This is a feel-good story, y'all. Passed over there by the, the used car lot, and I noticed a sign saying, "My First Lemonade Stand." I don't know if y'all noticed it or not. So, you know, little kid out there. And so I whipped in there, selling lemonade. And I pulled up, and I can't stand lemonade, but I was, you know, going to give the guy a couple of dollars. And I said, "What's this benefit for?" He said, "Well, I can't have a kitty cat, and I love cats." Evidently, they live in a place, won't let them have animals. And he said, "So we're out here, and we're going to raise money. And I'm going to take all the money I raised for my birthday today. And I'm going to take it over to the SPCA. And I'm going to buy them some toys and some food and some other stuff." And this little kid's name was Memphis Blankenship. His mom was named Autumn Blankenship. And I saw later on that afternoon, where they had a Facebook post, and they bought toys and they, for, for the cats. And they bought food and different things. And he'd spent all the money that he raised on that lemonade stand for, for the SPCA.
That's cool.
That's really, really good. Little six, seven-year-old kid. And he's also, he's got a daughter. They have, his sister named Kamala. And so Kamala, Memphis, and Autumn are over there just doing something for his birthday. And just the warmness in his heart really made me feel good.
That is, that is precious.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Couch?
Really don't have anything. I just want to, down on Hatteras, my district, District Four, we are kind of monit- we're, we're monitoring the crosswalks because there hadn't been a lot of respect for them. You know, we're very fortunate to have our multi-use paths, which keeps everybody on one side of the road. But with all the joggers, I mean, you've got young parents pushing baby strollers, not your major cyclists, but beach bike-type cyclists. And there's just some people just blowing through these crosswalks. I don't know what the answer is, other than a law enforcement. And I'm not sure how to recommend that we increase awareness of these crosswalks. There was somebody, they got bumped up in Rodanthie or in Waves. And I just shudder to think that there would be an accident because I, I witnessed it. I'm on the road every day, and most all the villages down there. And, you know, I, I stop for the things. I put on my flashers as well, but you've got some people just blowing through it, and they know good and well that they should be stopping. So you'll get an email, I'm sure. And we're just keeping, keep our eye on it. Fortunately, the bulk of the tourist season is over. But, you know, crosswalk safety is something that's, it's, it's the law. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
Thank you for bringing that up.
If I, if I could add to that, I know in cer- in certain, certain crosswalks on twelve in the towns, they have a sign that has the crosswalk underneath that. It says, "Yield to Pedestrian State Law." Is there a way that we could get those signs put on the crosswalks going down the Hatteras?
Bobby?
Sir? During the meeting, we received an email from a gentleman down, I think, in Rodanthie, addressing exactly that issue. While you all were talking, I forwarded that to Alan Moran and asked him to please help us come up with solutions to that problem. And so I'll hear back from Alan, and we'll see what we can get with DOT to do, to try to make it safer down there.
We've actually taken one of our billboards for a couple of weeks at a time and put on the side of the road, big flash, and, you know, slow down for these things. It, it is a problem, and it's, it's serious. Maybe, yeah, maybe we talk to the sheriff and get the sheriff to get his deputies to maybe start giving some, putting some tickets out there and the word getting out there, and maybe that'll help some.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
But I know I go down twelve on the northern beaches all the time. I try to stay off the bypass when I'm riding my Harley. But when I'm going down the beach road, you know, I, I stop at every one of them when I see somebody getting ready to cross. But I've, I've had people in front of me just blow right through them. And it, it is a problem. And hopefully, if we can get, get some tickets out there and the word getting out there, maybe that'll...
It's fundamental courtesy, yeah. It's just, yes.
So, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
County Manager?
Yes, sir, just two things. At the last meeting, I talked to you some length about the issue we were having with the LGC with regard to the beach nourishment projects. In the last week, I think we were able to resolve that, not with the LGC, unfortunately, but with, working with Weeks Marine, the contractor. We discussed some dates, and we got that worked out. And so where we are now with the LGC is if, we've asked them if we get our permits in October, to have a meeting in October to get them approved because it will preserve our really good, our less-than-one-percent interest rate that we have. I don't know whether they're going to let us do that or not yet. They haven't responded. But worst cases, we'll go to the LGC in December and get everything approved. From our perspective, there's rate risk. We, the bank probably will not hold our point-eight-nine-percent interest rate until December. So that rate will probably go up, and that delay by the LGC will cost us some money. It's not huge. It's not detrimental to the project. But nonetheless, it's one of those things. And so the, sort of the crisis we thought we were in, I think we've gotten resolved now for the moment. The second thing is that we've been working hard. And I know that you all are, I won't say impatient, have been very patient with affordable housing and have been pushing really hard to get something done. And we're getting close to that process. A lot of things are happening. I've gotten multiple phone calls in the last two weeks with developers that are interested in doing things here. I forwarded a couple of those to you all. One was wanting to do J-one housing, and he's saying he wants to be online with housing in April of twenty-three. The other is, is a large company. He actually called me from, he was in Switzerwind, visiting his family in Switzerwind, and called me from Switzerwind because he thought it was important enough to go ahead and start a conversation. I sent you that guy as well, and he's with a large national firm that have done that. They both work with DFI, so they're familiar with, with them and those processes. And so it, it looks promising that we have opportunities. I think now it's going to be a matter of, you know, what can we afford? Because most projects are going to require some level of participation from us, whether it's in the form of straight subsidies, whether it's in the form of, if we can even do that, of some kind of property tax abatement or whatever. The net is, there's some contribution of some type that would be required from local government to make pretty much any of these projects go. And finally, I, I got a note from, an email conversation back and forth with the architect, I think on Friday, for our Bowser Town and our, and our look at the Elizabethan Project. He's, at the end, he's got some drafts that he's finalizing on that. So we should have those for you all to look at and start talking about here pretty soon. I talked with Sarah Odeo at DFI on Wednesday. We're still on track. She's still promising to do our report for recommendations before the end of the year. So we're, we're on her track that we're going. I see the chairman cringe. That's not fast enough.
When you said end of the year, that's not making me happy.
I thought it was September.
Because we're supposed to get something in October.
We're supposed to get architect stuff in October, and we're supposed to be able, in a position, to make decisions before the end of the year. That would mean by our December meeting.
I'm not trying to contradict you, but in that meeting we had, we're all set around that. that, and I asked her specifically, "When are we looking to have something back from you?", and I thought she said September.
Well, she moved, she did, but then she, then she retract and said she'd have us something in October.
Okay, well, October's not the end of the year.
No, amen, I know. But Bobby's saying, we'll have something so that we can act on something by the end of the year.
But the way the schedule works, we should get, maybe by the next meeting, the, the architects' information and that sort of thing to have you all look at, you all have to then make decisions on what direction to go, you have to make decisions on how much money you're gonna spend, are you gonna subsidize both properties, just one property? Can we work out a purchase price with the buyer, with the seller at the Elizabethan? So there's some details that require us to do things, and it's gonna take us some time to go through that, and you've gotta go through your processes to make decisions, and she can't do her final thing, but we make those decisions, and so, again, when I say the end of the year, that's just for everybody to do all the things that have to be done to go forward, that's, we got it tomorrow, you're still looking at a couple of meetings at least, and that puts you near the end of the year, from, from our perspective, end of the year means December the fifth, because that's when our last meeting of the year is.
When this information comes to light, if we need to pull a special meeting, Mr. Chairman, please do.
That's exactly right, absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did, Hitch, can she give us something this month?
I don't know, I have, I'll, I'll, we have a conference call scheduled for Wednesday.
Because, I mean, we need to hold them to it, because they, she initially said September, and then she said she'll have us something in October, we really need something this month. And please reiterate that to her, we, we're expecting something this month.
Continue to push, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman?
Bobby, just a question, going back to the LGC, what, what's their concern? What's, what's the holdup there? I mean, they're, they're talking about costing us, I mean, in, in the scheme of things, it, it may not be much money, but it's much money, you know, when you, when you break it down, just look at it on its own, but what, what's their concern seem to be when we've done these projects multiple times?
There is no concern. The reason that Weeks was willing to work with us is because the LGC told us on our finance side that our finances were perfect, there were no issues with it, our money was right, our documents were right, everything is good for approval. They have a checklist, and their checklist says that they have to have all your permits in before they will approve a financing, irrespective of whether your financing is good or not, and we asked them why, given that we can't do a project without having the permits, which means we can't spend the money without having the permits, which means there's no risk to the county or the taxpayers without having permits. Their job is to protect us from ourselves and the taxpayers from poor decisions by boards, and so we don't have any of those problems, and so our question to them was, "Why are you holding us to this, simply because it's on a checklist? What, what is your risk? Tell us what the risk is and we'll solve it." And they can't tell us that there's any risk, other than our rules say you gotta have a permit, and it's not in the statute. Statute says you have to meet three criteria, we've met those criteria, it doesn't mention, it's an internal rule that they have. In a normal time, we wouldn't have brought this to an issue either, because we would have just moved the permitting, we would have just moved to the decent, to the November meeting, and we would never have brought this to your attention, it wouldn't have mattered, except they've got another rule that says if you don't have all your audits in at the time of, at, anything that you want approved after October, if you don't have your year-end audit in, they won't approve it. So, on October thirtieth, our finances are good and everything's great, they can approve it, but on November the first, the next day, if we don't have our audit in, now our financials aren't any good and they can't approve it. So, so that means it's not possible for us to get on the November agenda, so that then puts us to their December agenda to get something approved that there's no risk on either of those two criteria, either the audit or, or the approval, or the permitting, and, you know, again, we, we went as far as we could go to push them without ruining our relationship, and we're successful in doing it. Is that fair to say, Dave?
Well, let's, let's ask about the permits a minute. I mean, we've, we've done these, done these projects multiple times, but what's the issue with the permit?
It's just straight timing for the, we expect to get the permits around the middle of October, October the fifteenth, and, and the LGC meets, it meets tomorrow, October the fifth, and so, you know, we're, the permits are gonna be two weeks late. Now, we're dealing with federal agencies, and I can't, I can't promise you it's gonna be on October the fifteenth, because it might be November the first, but we're not aware of any issues why the permits would not be, it seems to be routine, and it's just a matter of getting them through the process and getting our permits to the top of the file.
So, that audit notwithstanding, if it goes beyond the end of October, how are they gonna bypass that, because we're not gonna have an audit?
We're not, we're gonna, we're gonna go to December to get our approvals, which, as of right now, isn't a problem, because we've got Weeks to agree to that.
Yeah.
But...
Then it gets back to the bank, and what, what, what's the interest rates?
So, really, what's now, it's our interest rate.
Okay, thank you, Bobby.
And, and, and then, I just, one last thing, the December time has got another potential problem, because we'll have our audit, our audit won't be a problem, but all the towns have to have their audits and their component parts, whoever else you have to get audits from, like us, the ABC Board or whatever, we have to have all of those too, so there's a lot of moving parts, and if one of them isn't there, then they all fail, and so, you know, we think we're, everybody, the towns have all told me they'll be ready by November to have them in for that December meeting, but if something goes kifluwi there, then we're now into January, and I don't know what that does, you know? So, it's been a big mess, not of our cause, and really, from our perspective at least for no reason.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yep.
Thank you, Bobby. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Let me ask you this, what's the chances of us, of us doing a video on the crosswalk? And trying to get something out there?
I actually made a note about that, because we have some, we had started a, a campaign at one time, we actually have a couple of images on our trash truck, so I made a note to pull that and look at it and see how we might refresh.
Oh, great, thank you. You're on top of it then, thank you, Doris. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us today?
Just that what Bobby said, the same situation we're in was true for all four of the towns, so, you know, it's even multiplied by that much, but that's it.
Great. Yes, sir, Commissioner Count?
Dave, what have traditionally been our interest rates? Have they been over one? I mean, point eight-nine, when we saw that, I mean, that's, it was just fantastic, but...
Never had anything like that, and I, the issue is treasury rates have gone up by about one quarter of one percent since we took all those bids, and the, the towns have placed all their debt, will be with PNC, and, and they've been told that past October thirty-first, PNC won't hold those rates either, so, but that's understandable, but there's not, I mean, it's exposure, and I think what our guys in Raleigh have lost track of is that they're creating cost.
Sure.
But it, it's not, money-wise, a ton of exposure, but it's gonna increase our cost.
It is, I mean, in our budget, we budgeted significantly more interest cost than what it's gonna cost, even if it goes up, so there's no danger to the projects, there's no risk that we won't be able to do it or be able to afford it or any of that kind of stuff, but every dollar that we pay extra in interest is a dollar that comes out of that fund that we could use for future beach nourishment projects.
Absolutely right.
So, it costs us something, it's costing us more than it should, and, you know, if there was a reason, then so be it, we get it, and if there was a risk that we can't mitigate, then so be it, but we can't, we don't know what the risk is, they can't tell us what the risk is, and so we can't address the risk, it just is because they said it is, and, and we're stuck with that, so...
It's a damn shame we can't find them. Isn't that true? All right, that brings us to close to our meetings, any, anything else for the good of the public from the board? With that being said...
Motion to adjourn.
...to adjourn until October the eighteenth.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign, motion carries unanimous.